It is seven o'clock, people go ahead. It's not seven o'clock, it's seven oh something. We're late, sorry. If you would, please stand and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we need a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Is there a second?
Second.
If there's any discussion, Sandra, would you please call roll?
Angie?
Yes.
Charlene?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Very good. That takes us to 2.03, Honoring Excellence. Mr. Ackerman.
Good to see everyone tonight, and good to see a packed house here in the boardroom tonight. Want to welcome several of our guests that made it out this evening, along with some students, I believe, picking up some observation hours. You'll probably get a chance to meet them here in just a moment as well. But we are excited to introduce you to some special individuals that have joined us. We're joined by Roadrunners, by Sharks, and we have a Blue Jay athlete. We'll introduce you to here in just a moment. But first, want to tell you about something really neat taking place at Ridgeview Elementary. You may have read about this or heard about this in recent weeks. But I'll just read a prepared statement about what's going on at Ridgeview. For years, the Ridgeview PTA has wanted to provide a walking trail for Ridgeview. They wanted a way for students, families, and the community to safely exercise during and after school. Thanks to the leadership of the Ridgeview PTA and partnerships with Liberty United Methodist Church, the Surtoma Club of Liberty, and Mid-America Nazarene University, Ridgeview now has a walking trail. In the spirit of student leadership, which is developed through the leader in me, the PTA's plan included an opportunity for students, as well as volunteers, to be a part of building the trail. On Friday, November 7th, the trail was dedicated to the students of Ridgeview, and PTA put out a challenge for students to walk 30 miles in the month of November to exercise healthy choices. And I hope they bring their stocking hats and gloves. The students and community have been thrilled with the new trail. Thank you to everyone who synergized, which is one of the seven habits to make this dream a reality. And we have some special guests with us tonight from Ridgeview. Principal Laura LaCroix. Laura, if you would stand up. Oh, you guys moved on me.
We had to stay together.
We have Laura Winkler and her husband Levon, representing Liberty United Methodist Church, and also Jason Faust, representing Surtoma. Nicole Hodge, representing the Ridgeview PTA. Nicole, good to see you as well here this evening. So congratulations, great work. We also just placed on our website today a story on the walking trail, so you'll have to check that out a little bit later. So I'm going to go ahead and present Laura and her team with this award here tonight. Let's give them a round of applause. We also want to tell you a little bit about the good things taking place at Lilian Schumacher Elementary. May have read about this recently. As well as the Midwest Dairy Council and Fuel Up to Play 60 recently launched a For the Love of Play campaign to inspire everyone to get up and active for at least 60 minutes of play a day. Getting a little theme going here tonight. At home, at school, and everywhere in between. Midwest Dairy then encouraged schools throughout the Midwest to share photos of their favorite ways to play in the For Love of Play contest. And following a voting process, we are pleased to report that chosen as Missouri's winner is Lilian Schumacher Elementary. Schumacher's entry featured a school-wide Walk to School Day where students, parents, teachers, and the principal, who I'll introduce in a moment, participated in a walking school bus. For winning the contest, Schumacher receives a $500 cash prize to support in-school health and wellness initiatives. With us tonight, we have the principal at Schumacher, Mr. Chris Gabriel. Chris, if you'd stand up and wave. And then we have Ms. Denise Steenstra, who is the physical education teacher at Lilian Schumacher. And Ms. Steenstra has been so passionate about wellness. And I was talking to her as she arrived tonight, and they actually won a similar contest last year and earned $3,000 for the school. So doing wonderful things in the Shark Tank, as they like to call it, at Lilian Schumacher. So let's give these guys a big round of applause. And Madison, if you would join me here at the podium, want to tell you about this young lady. You may have read about her. She very likely is the most decorated high school volleyball player to ever come through Liberty. She was recently named the 2014 American Volleyball Coaches Association Under Armour First Team All-American, the number nine recruit in the country ranked by PrepVolleyball.com, a three-time All-State selection. Ended her career as the school's record holder for career kills with 1,391 at Liberty High School. And just last week, made big news as she signed her National Letter of Intent to play volleyball at the University of Wisconsin to play for the Badgers. Very fitting, Madison going to Madison. You like that? I need to also mention that Madison helped lead the Liberty High School volleyball team to its best season ever, a trip to the state final four that ended with a fourth-place finish, an overall record of 31, 2, and 4. So congratulations to head coach April Fleming and the Lady J volleyball team. I know April couldn't make it tonight, but please pass along our best to her. So at this time, want to recognize Ms. Madison Dwellow. And Madison, we wish you the best of luck in your collegiate career. And from Steve Anderson, he wanted me to pass along this to you. I was telling them about how he's a big fan. Let's give her a round of applause.
There you are. Congratulations.
So with that, that concludes our Honoring Excellence for this month. Have a great rest of the evening.
Very good. Thank you, Dallas. I always tell people about my brush with greatness. Madison's family, Dave and Kristen, used to live in the house right behind us. And so I always tell people I knew. Now, I didn't take it personally when they left. Because they moved a couple of years ago. But I always tell people I knew Madison when she was this big. She's not that big anymore.
Well, I can top that because I held Madison when she was first born. Yes. Because I worked with Kristen.
I bow.
At one of my previous jobs, and yes, her firstborn.
Time flies. Time flies. Well, if you wouldn't mind, just stick around with us. We have a little tradition. We'd like to take a break at this point and shake the hands of those who are involved with the Ridgeview Walking Trail, with the Schumacher Health Initiatives, and with the Dwellow family. So we're going to take a break. I will mention, though, public comment is the next portion of the meeting. If anyone would like to speak before the board tonight, if you wouldn't mind filling out one of the blue cards right outside the door, get it back to one of us up here, and we'll get you to the podium. At this time, we're going to go ahead and take about a 10-minute break, come back about 7:25. Okay, we'll reconvene, and this takes us to public comment. I didn't get any blue cards. Is anyone else sure blue card? Is there anyone else? I don't see anyone else to address the board tonight. So we will move on to the consent agenda. And I always have a paragraph that I read before we go through this portion of the meeting. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's Rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Most of the items listed under the consent agenda have gone through board subcommittee review and recommendation. Documentation concerning these items has been approved, has been provided to all board members and the public in advance to ensure an extensive and thorough review. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member. So at this time, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Items 4.01 through 5.02, is that right?
3.01 to 6.03.
6.03.
Through 6.03.
I move the board approve consent agenda items 3.01 through 6.03.
There you go. That's the motion. Any further discussion on consent? If not, Sandra, would you please call roll?
Angie?
Yes.
Charlene?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Very good. That takes us to board policy updates, and there's one on the agenda for first read.
Yeah, this is for informational purposes only, so it's really just permitted, presented this evening, as far as FYI. As you recall, back in October, we approved the student absence and excuses for grades nine through 12. This encompasses grades K through eight. Included within those procedures are definition of some key terms, some attendance standards, clarification on consequences for violations, as well as notices being provided, as well as due process. So just providing that for your information this evening.
Very good. Any questions for administration on that item? If not, we will move on to 8.01, unfinished business and the district calendar update.
To give you an update, we plan on bringing the district calendar to the Board of Education in December for our public hearing. Currently, we are working with districts throughout the Northland on trying to, as best as possible, collaborate and confer on our calendars. We are actually one of the first districts to get to this point and being prepared to bring forth a calendar. As you'll recall, Team Liberty facilitates that dialogue and conversation for our district. Appreciate the efforts that they have done. We're currently looking at draft number four, which is provided for you this evening in your packet. So that's forthcoming. Certainly look to schedule that in December. But again, coordinate with the Northland districts for really three reasons. For students that attend and participate in Northland CAPS, and trying to coordinate with those participants, as well as students that we send to the Excelsior Springs School District and our Career Center there, and participation along with Platte County School District and the students that attend the Career Center there as well. So that discussions are ongoing as we speak in hopes of wrapping it up in December. Dr. Vogel, ours has been working on that as well, as far as coordinating with the Northland districts. Anything to add?
No, it's a great summary, and they're looking at December, January to finalize their drafts as they take it through committee. And so having it now would cement our calendar before, you know, they're in a place to have something. And if it's in our best interests to make some modifications before solidifying it, that's really why we wanted to lay.
So since we're further along, do they have what we're working off of right now?
It's close. A couple of them start sooner, and they offset our spring break. So if the Northland CAPS schools, for example, have a spring break the week before we do, then kids who participate in that, for example, would be off. And then when CAPS is back on, then we're off. And so you get that kind of discontinuity. So it doesn't necessarily mean we have to align entirely, but we want to see, and they've got our draft, so they now know what we want those dates to be. And then it's just a matter of finding out what's basically in the collective best interest of all participating school systems.
Because that's what I was getting at. I mean, I think that the tweaks that were made to the calendar, I think they're going to be very favorable to our kids and our patrons, and I don't want that work necessarily undone.
Yeah.
And if we're further along, I would hope the other districts might take a look at what we're doing.
I hope so, and I've had very positive conversations with them. I know on the start date, you know, they're looking at as early as the 13th, which we've already dismissed, so I don't think that that would be a modification we would entertain. So we'll wait and see. I mean, obviously, the best-case scenario is they take our calendar to their committees and have their committees fall in love with our calendar. But we'll let that process unfold, so.
I do have just one comment. I mean, we have had this conversation, but when we look at the calendar, after all of the statutory requirements, the frames that we look at are what's best for students, what's best for teachers in terms of professional development, and what's best for the community. And just recently, we've had a conversation about community feedback also. I've had parents say to me, "When will we look at our calendar in relation to other districts? Because my spouse works there, it's difficult for childcare, or we're moving back and forth." So it does actually answer a broader need as well.
No further questions on that? We go to 8.02, unfinished business.
Dr. Williams has been front-loading the board over the course of our last couple of meetings in October, provided you an overview, but also documentation related to course proposals, and wanted to present that to you this evening and recommendations.
Good evening. You have the four new second reads that were presented at the October meeting, and those are the high school course proposals. They relate to fine arts, to AP Language and Composition, and to career internships. Are there any questions related to those high school course proposals?
Marley, is the AP English Language and Composition just going to be at Liberty North?
No.
Okay.
And these have not changed since we looked at these last time.
No, they have not.
You've seen these, we've been through, and then we've had the opportunity to look at it for months, so.
Correct. And to explain, the fine arts encompasses some changes in the length of some of those courses. Most of all, the art teachers with Mr. Money decided that in looking at their program, they are offering a year-long foundations course. When most students, when they reach high school, want to explore media or mediums more in-depth. So what they've done is they've decided that that should be a half-credit or one semester course, so that students can take the second semester in a particular medium. And that accounted for those adjustments. So it was Art Foundations, Digital and Advanced Photography, Graphic Design, Observational Drawing, and Sculpture. And then they added a pre-AP Studio course because that is such an extensive portfolio to develop. They wanted kids to have an additional semester. Any other questions? Okay. The next set of information, set of course proposals you have, relate to middle school, and those are pre-AP 6th and 7th grade English Language Arts and pre-AP 6th and 7th grade Math. As you've heard me talk about for the past year, we are currently piloting 6th grade pre-AP Math at Discovery Middle School. I'm happy to report that the 28 students in that course are doing very well. Dr. Moore has had very positive feedback. The teachers are positive, and Amber Learman is the instructor. She and Jamie Miller, one of our PE teachers, are actually going to work together with Dr. Westfall on December 4th to write the curriculum for those two courses, the scope and sequence and the course descriptions. So those would be the two new courses for middle level. Some items of information, not course proposals, but just things I want to make you aware of. We will be offering PE and Health every day as opposed to every other day next year at the middle level. I think this falls in line with our strategic plan with healthy communities and our wellness initiative. And I think it is really important for kids, being a middle school parent, that they are up and able to move every single day. It does help their cognitive engagement when they are forced to sit and focus. And I see smile, so I hope those. Okay.
I think our AP graders are not going to appreciate that as much as some of the.
Probably.
It's all good.
They need it. They may not appreciate it.
My daughter's a 7th grader, so I'm, I know. Computers courses. Susan Newton actually is the Curriculum Council representative for the Business Department at the middle level. And she suggested, in collaboration with some of her colleagues, that we shift the focus of the middle school computers courses from being application-based to being more computer science-focused. The reality is that kids are coming to middle level with greater expertise or technology is concerned. And simply teaching them programs like Word or Excel or PowerPoint, it just doesn't serve any good purpose. So what they would like to do is more exploration of coding and programming and computer science sorts of things. So that is an item of information. They will be working together to rework the content of that course. And finally, when you add PE and Health every day, and then you have to make the adjustments in the master schedule. So what that looks like is the Innovations course will not be offered. It will be inactivated, but Speech will come back as an elective for 6th and 7th grade, so that kids could take an elective on the opposite day of their computers course. So Speech and Theater will be a 6th and 7th grade option as an elective, which means Innovations will no longer be required and will be inactivated. So just in a master scheduling perspective, that's what that looks like. Those are all first read, so if you have any questions that come to mind over the next month, I will be back in December to answer any of those questions. But I'm happy to entertain any things that you're thinking of now.
Curriculum-wise, with the pre-AP Math and ELA, how's that going to be different than like the gifted math?
Yes. That's a very good question, and that's why Jamie was part of the steering committee last spring. Our PE program is Acceleration. That is the model for our gifted program at the middle level. And an Acceleration model is a good gifted model. However, with pre-AP, it's about complexity of product and critical thinking. So the 6th and 7th grade pre-AP courses have the same priority standards as the 6th and 7th grade math courses. But the products and the presentations or reflections that they complete look different than the regular 6th and 7th grade class, but they're not accelerating into the next-grade level of content like our PE kids are. Good question.
Anything else for Dr. Wade? Thank you.
Thank you. I did bring this with me, and I almost forgot to speak about it. If you approve the high school course proposals tonight, we can remove the pending board approval tags on the program of studies, and all 70 pages will be ready to be published tomorrow. This program of studies, I know my friends from Liberty North who are observing tonight, will be happy to see so they can choose their courses for next year if they're not graduating, like some of them are. But this contains course descriptions for every one of the courses offered at the high school level. It contains NCAA and NAIA course information, as well as just a really quick chart of every course offered by department. So that will be on the website if anyone is interested in looking at that in more detail.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. So to be clear, action tonight would be on the nine attachments that you see there, and then everything else we will act on next month. So AP English, Digital Photo, Opti-Drawing, Sculpture. You have them listed? You've got them listed as well? Okay.
The many on the courses she referenced are under academic service, so that did not confuse you with those action items.
Okay. I didn't have it online, so I wasn't sure exactly what they'd see. Okay, so on these nine, the recommended action would be, I move the board approve the course proposals and changes as presented. Is there a motion to that effect? Is there a second?
Second.
Very good. Further discussion on this item? If not, Sandra, would you please call roll?
Angie?
Yes.
Charlene?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Very good. Takes us to 8.03, Strategic Plan Adoption.
You have the update provided for you again this evening, which we've seen the last couple of months, starting in October with our study session and then also at our regular meeting. ELT has been given that charge of reviewing and updating with the intent being to extend it out to the 2014 through 2019 period. There are a couple of pieces that are still kind of up in the air as it relates to data collection. And appreciate Mr. Hand and Dr. Saluri gathering data related to the annual performance targets. To highlight a couple of items that we actually just received this afternoon as it pertains to our graduation rate, increased our graduation rate from 2013 to 2014. In 2013, that was right at 90.6, whereas in 2014 at 93.5. So a pretty substantial gain there. As it relates to college and career readiness, performance indicators, number of high school students participating in advanced placement from 340 in 2013 to 354, so a gain of 14. Number of students in AP exams from 436 in 2013 to 477 in 2014. And the number of exam scores that exceeded a three or above increased that from 244 to 251. So again, this is as of this afternoon, but we'll get that information out to you via a Friday update. Along with the data pertaining to our performance indicators, another piece that is withstanding is we're in the process of soliciting feedback from our district leadership team in specifically developing measurements tied to two performance indicators. That is how we gauge success in personal, social, and civic responsibility and developing that instrument or that tool and measurement. The second piece being how we gauge students participating in civic-oriented projects and being able to identify baseline data as it relates to that. So those two pieces are withstanding. Otherwise, the strategic plan's been updated and presented for your approval this evening.
Very good. We're printing a motion on the table if we're going to discuss anything. The recommended motion would be, I move the board adopt the 2014-15 district strategic plan as presented.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this item? Sandra, please call roll.
Angie?
Yes.
Charlene?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Very good. That takes us to section nine, new business. 9.01, Contracts and Amendments.
We do have two contracts presented this evening. The first is with a professional services agreement with Jill A. Moley, who is slated to provide professional development for early childhood staff. This is presented for first read this evening. You can see the fiscal note attributed to that of $2,180.64, which is a one-time occurrence. The second piece, which is actually time-sensitive, is through Sherwood Center for the Exceptional Child Agreement. This is to begin immediately in terms of servicing a student at an annual cost of $32,500. Again, this one being time-sensitive. So again, the first one presented for first read, second one requiring action this evening.
Okay, and the one for 32 is Sherwood.
Correct.
Is there additional information you can share with us on this that isn't in that document, or?
In respect to the types of services provided?
Yes.
Okay, that's contracting out services with Sherwood Center for the Exceptional Child. And in the description provided, through special programs, you could provide additional insight as to that program, expecting?
Anytime we can serve a student in district, we do. And sometimes kids just get beyond the level that we're able to support. And in this case, the student has some behavioral needs and related to some other diagnoses. And we needed to seek out another setting. There also are some medical needs, and some of the settings we've used in the past when we go out of district didn't have the level of support to maintain the needs of that student medically. So this is a new contract for us, at least in recent years. We've not contracted with them, but Chris Martin has been out and feels strongly that it's a good setting for the student.
Not necessarily because of the special circumstances we've just run into.
Right.
And it's one-on-one, day-long assistance, speech therapy, occupational therapy, as far as meeting those individual student needs.
It's just a first-read thing, so. I move the board approve the agreement with Sherwood Center for the Exceptional Child, a first read. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
If no further discussion, Sandra, would you please call roll?
Angie?
Yes.
Charlene?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.[1758.65]
Andy?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Michelle Kars.
Very good. Takes us to 9.02, Board Candidate Workshop.
A couple of items of information here in approaching timeframe for filing for intent to run for the board. A couple of key pieces. Two positions will be available for three-year terms currently held by Charlene Armitage and David Evans. The election is scheduled for the spring on April 7, 2015. You've been provided a copy of the public notice pertaining to intent to file, which captures a couple of items. The beginning date for the filing window is December 23 at 8:00 a.m. here in the District Administration Center, and the filing closing on, at the end of the day, on January 20, 2015 at 5:00 p.m. Captured within the notice, of course, is dates and times in which the district offices are closed due to holidays. A new item this year is actually, as it pertains to candidate affidavit of tax payment. That is a new requirement, which is caught in revenue form 5120 by the Missouri Department of Revenue. Adjunct to that is a proposed workshop date. We're looking at holding the Board Candidate Workshop December 1st this year, 2014, from 5:00 p.m. until 6:00 p.m. in the District Administration Center, right here in the Board of Education room. So, that's our tentative date. Wanted to double-check everyone's availability. Typically, that's facilitated by the Board President in conjunction with Board Secretary. Other Board members are certainly invited to attend. Of course, I'll participate as well from the perspective of a superintendent, so like to confirm any conflicts with Board at this time.
Well, I have a conflict. I'm out of the country that week, which is, we've talked about post-putting the work session, and just discussed, we're probably going to have that work session. We may have a closed session at 6:00 that night. You are running.
Right. Well?
As the immediate past Vice President, would you be able to facilitate that training? I'm putting you on the spot for Monday.
No, that's okay. And I want to make sure, so it's December?
Monday, December 1st.
Yes, the Monday immediately following Thanksgiving.
Two weeks from this evening.
Or if not, if you're not sure, we can talk about that and make sure somebody's there to facilitate.
But I can't. Right.
But, yeah, you might be able to, and I will be gone, so. We will make sure that happens.
But we're going to do the board work session, so I could do it before that.
Right.
We're still going to have, yes, I'm?
5:00 is the workshop.
Yeah.
I would guess 6:00, which will be a closed session if we need one, and then 7:00 will be the work session before 6:30 immediately after close. So, we will cover it. I'm just not sure how yet.
Okay. We can go ahead and lock that date in, then, to where what we'll do next is, as early as tomorrow, is communicate our intent to hold the workshop on December 1st between 5:00 and 6:00 p.m.
Very good.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Lori.
Very good.
That's it on the Board Candidate Workshop.
Excellent. Okay. Section 10, this one's all your report from administration.
Academic Services Report. I think Dr. Coram is facilitating that presentation this evening.
We had quite a lengthy board report this time. We're really trying to work hard to include quite a bit from our directors, as well as highlighting some of our buildings. But today, it's much more about curriculum and some of the focused work that our curriculum committees are doing. First of all, it's about our grad follow-up. Each of us in Academic Services has a list of students to call for grad follow-up, so we're going to work on that and finalize that by January. So, if we're missing a few students, we can hunt them down, too. So, we may be asking if you know of any of the students that we need to hunt down. So, hopefully, we'll make all of those phone calls. Jeanette Westfall has been working with our curriculum group, and she has over, she and her team have over 100 courses that have been placed on Build Your Own Curriculum. That link, that link is on Liberty on the public side, on the public page. So, those are exciting to be able to have up for our public. We also have several, we also have many of our staff that has been attending the training for ICLE, which is the International School for Leadership in Education. They have been working on training our teachers in literacy and in math, so we've been excited to see that growth and have had some wonderful feedback coming back from the teachers that have been involved with that. And then, I certainly have to say with my colleagues and I, we have truly enjoyed our data consults. Both Becky Marley and I have been attending data consults at every building but one, so we have seen and had conversations from pre-K to 12, and the three of us have sat down with buildings and talked about data consults, the direction they're headed, how can we help support them, about two hours, two and a half hours at every building. So, it's been some wonderful conversations, some planning, some direction setting, and so we've really enjoyed having that district-wide perspective. So, we look forward to finishing that and then continuing to communicate that with Academic Services and with the principals as far as findings go. Any questions that I can answer?
Can you give a little more detail on Build Your Own Curriculum?
Absolutely, and I'm the person to ask that, because that was my love in Park Hill. So, Build Your Own Curriculum is a way for the public to be able to see the curriculum that is, the framework of curriculum that are in our courses. So, the 100 courses that are in there, you can easily move into Build Your Own Curriculum and see that course and look at both the course and by quarter what that looks like. So, it's a very good way to be transparent with the courses that we have.
And so, the 100 courses that are in there already, that's work that teachers are doing?
That is correct.
And get their coursework?
Yes.
Out there so that people can see what?
Yes. Many of them have worked on it this summer, so they're just finalizing that in Build Your Own Curriculum. You can have a draft, and then the draft becomes public, so those are just becoming public work that the teachers have done this summer. Dr. Westfall, was there anything to add? Okay. 154. That's impressive, really. Very, very impressive. And she's been great in leading that charge with teachers. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Coram. Next is our finance report. Cindy Sullivan?
Good evening. In accordance with Board Policy KH Public Gifts to School, the following donations are presented. A monetary donation in the amount of $500 donated by Restore Community Church to assist with South Valley Middle School 6th, 7th, and 8th grade field trips. A monetary donation in the amount of $560 donated by Target to assist with the LMC book purchases at Ridgeview Elementary. A donation by Liberty United Methodist Church of a bench waystation volunteer hours and bobcat use for the walking trail at Ridgeview Elementary. And a monetary donation in the amount of $700 donated by Reed Portrait Group to support the Leader in Me program at Ridgeview Elementary. Like to thank these groups for their support of Liberty Public Schools. I will note on your financial report that the FY15 fund balance percentage is currently projected to be 18.89%. That's down 1.6% from last month, and that's due to Desi finally coming out with information about how they propose that the year is going to play out. And, right now, they're projecting the fund balance percentage to be 96.875. We budgeted for 97, so we're right there. I mean, the school finance workshop webinar that I watched last week, they said that might creep up just a little to 97 or above, so we're standing with our 97 for now until we hear anything different, since we're really so close to that. That 3.125% reduction costs the district $1.662 million. Just want everybody to know that. It's not pleasant, but it is what it is, so we all need to recognize that. Proposition C payment, which is the sales tax, is currently projected at $922 per weighted average daily attendance, and that was the information that Desi put out this spring. However, in the webinar, they now are projecting that that's only going to be between $888 and $917. So, we're a little high there. I will reflect that on next month's operating projection, since that was new information after this month's financials were done. That will be about a $300, $300,000 budget reduction, which is, you know, not much of a percent, so we won't see too much dip in that. You all have been informed about House Bill 1689, which was a preschool House Bill with financial implications tagged on to the end of it. The state is now required to reduce the state adequacy target for funding based on the appropriation of state monies to education. What that means to the district is that our current state adequacy target is $6,131 per student. With this House Bill 1689, that will drop it, as of right now, to $5,985 per student. That will cost the district $1,882,000, which is approximately $220,000 more than the current proration factor we have. That is readjusted every two years, so we know for budgeting purposes, two years at a time, what that SAT will be, provided the legislature doesn't decide to change that, which, you know, it doesn't ever hurt to contact the legislatures to let them know we're not happy with this and that it's costing us a lot of money.
So, that 1.8 million is, 1.6 of that is gone anyway?
Yes. So, that's what I said, 220 more in addition. But, I mean, that, that number will?
Yes.
Yeah. And if the proration factor would go up, it would, that funding level then would, you know, become wider, is what we're losing. So, this is all in an effort to say that they've fully funded the formula by reducing that SAT, but we all know we're still short money. That's just a way to make a promise that they have fully funded the formula when they've just reduced permanently what we're going to get.
Well, I think that's, that's something that we need to be aware of as we're talking to community members, parents, patrons, that now they're going to be able to say, we funded the formula when we're still behind.
Absolutely.
So, people are then going to say, okay, well, if you've got all the money back from the state, can you redo local taxes, et cetera, and that's just not the case.
Correct.
So, in the future, when we, in the near future, when we hear formula's fully funded, that's a little bit of a game.
The analogy that we've?
It's a different formula.
Exactly. The analogy that we've used is a glass that's half-full, cutting off the glass to appear as it looks full.
Right.
So, that's a communication piece, and certainly will play out over the course of the legislative session, and it's all predicated on the amount of revenue available come July 1st.
Didn't just magically become less of an expense? We just made it smaller.
It's okay.
And I have, on the operating spreadsheet, projection spreadsheet, you will see down in the assumptions where I have changed the future years to reflect that reduction, as we are being told now to be the 5985. The first few years, it doesn't cause the fund balance to change much, but as the population of students grow, the fund balance has hit a little bit harder each year. So, I encourage you to take a look at that and see how that plays out. Then next month, the $922 for Prop C will also be figured in there, and that will then take a hit for every year going forward as well. So, I encourage you to look over that and let me know if you have questions.
I want to make sure I understood that. So, you're saying as our population grows, we get hit harder? That's called new math. I don't know. Okay. Okay. I hear you.
We get less and less money per student.
The more students?
And it costs more to educate those students as we grow in the future. Numerically, not necessarily, but as costs, as it costs more to hire new teachers, the fund balance will be hurt in the future.
That's why that forecast document's so critical, in that you can change whether some of those revenue projections, expenditure projections, and depending upon the information that you have any given point in time, and kind of predict out what that's going to look like. So, on a monthly basis, we get those reports from Desi in terms of the sales tax rate, other pieces, Prop C, Classroom Trust Fund, and can look at the best information we have at that given time. So, appreciate Cindy and her staff for being able to do that.
Thank you. A week and a half ago, Dr. Tucker and I met with Greg Booker to do some planning for our debt, and as we know, we are, would like to go out in February and capture the remainder of the levy proceeds that we have not in the form of lease participation certificates. That should be about a $7 million offering, which will complete the costs and pay for all of the remaining projects at the two high schools. I do believe the go-to-market resolution will be brought to you at the December 1st work session, so look for that. In conjunction, closely following that, we would like to look at refinancing or refunding the 2006 general obligation bond. That would be an early refunding, and it would generate approximately $1,000,000.4 in savings, so we would like to look at doing that. I think he, Greg Booker, will be here at the December 1st work session, and we'll talk to you about that and present that one at the same time. Then, further down the road, we looked at a 2008 bond series that we would like to do an advance to refunding on that. That's a $58 million general obligation bond series that we would reduce the monthly payment on that, but that will be a couple of years down the road. But, we are talking about that already to try and look at our debt load and see what we need to do down?
So, after this, after this 2006 refi, the next opportunity is another couple of years down the road?
Correct.
There wouldn't be one in the middle for you?
We could look at that 2008 bond series and the timing on what is best is really not certain right now, based on the market.
But it's a little early for that one.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
So, any questions on that? I know we'll be hearing more about that as we come into the December work session. AFC met last Monday night. We had a great meeting, a lot of good discussion about all of this. They're really interested in asking good questions, and I think that they're doing a good job for you, so that's my report.
Very good. Anything else for Cindy? We'll be later on. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Human Resources, Dr. Vogel.
Yes, thank you. We have our HR report, three documents that are uploaded there. One is an update on the Evergreen Compensation Study, kind of the status chart of that. I've also included our student enrollment numbers current for the district, and really just to highlight out of the report, the Evergreen Study is drawing near to a close. We anticipate at the end of December to have that data to distribute out to Team Liberty so that we can really dive into it in January. I've gotten some calls from surrounding school districts thanking us for doing this study because of the volumes of data that they are pulling for Evergreen. I've been apologetic, but also deeply appreciative for their work contributing to this study. Benefits enrollment wrapped up on Friday. All our employees, eligible employees have enrolled benefits for fiscal year 15, or, I'm sorry, calendar year 15, so we're ready to go there. And we're setting our sights now on getting ready for our recruiting season to start, believe it or not. We'll start launching that in late January, and so we're getting ready with our recruiting materials and setting our dates for reaching out to prospective candidates as we get ready to hire for the 15, 16 school years. Is it too soon to talk about that? Charlie knows it's not. She's lived this world for a good number of years and know that, how early that season does start. So, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to entertain those, but otherwise, that concludes the HR report.
Items for Dr. Vogel. Make sure and not skip over operations this time. Mr. Anderson?
The only thing I was going to highlight out of the report was related to construction. The weather has not been working in our favor, especially at Liberty High School, as they've been trying to get some of the masonry work ramped up. So, we're watching that very closely. Hopefully, we have a break here in the coming weeks and into, and through the holidays, so that they can get that, the expansion kind of buttoned up here before the real heavy weather starts to hit. So, we'll kind of keep a close eye on that. There's been some conversations about potentially looking at overtime if we, if we needed to kind of make that up as we head into the spring, so we'll keep you posted on that as we move into the next month or two. And other than that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
What if the open day? Were you looking for?
I think both, right now, both are expected to kind of wrap up in late spring, April, May timeframe. The Liberty North is a little bit more ahead of schedule. Liberty High School might be closer to late May, and that's something we're kind of keeping a close eye on.
Okay. Cindy, you mentioned something in your report on scheduling to make better use of space. Do you have any, is that something that you're prospectively going to be looking at, or is that something that there's already been some observations about?
Well, I think that it's an ongoing goal, and I think, especially as we look at the next series of work into the next, as part of the facility master plan, it's nothing ongoing at the moment, but I think it's something that is clearly embedded in the direction of the district as it looks to future growth.
Okay. That's in keeping with our facilities master plan to try to reduce the square footage applied to total number of students, and I think we've done that in some of our flexible spaces, and I think we'll find additional opportunities, particularly at the secondary level, as we start thinking about course offerings and how that looks a little different than what we've seen as tradition. So, yeah. offerings and how that looks a little different than what we've seen as tradition, so. Other questions for operations? On the Superintendent's Report, just a couple of items to highlight. And following up on our debt service and management piece, as Cindy was sharing, keep in mind that we are unique as one of the fastest-growing districts in Missouri, that when we talk about bonding capacity, that is a unique issue to growing districts like ourselves. So when we talk about refinancing and the things that we see on the horizon, it really relates to not only cost savings that we could potentially incur, but it also has everything to do with restructuring, so that we can restructure the way that we add on to our facilities, renovate, and remodel within the limits that are provided to us under our debt service structure. So keep that in mind. A couple of other items to draw from the Superintendent's Report in identifying legislative issues that we might see are forthcoming this legislative session, and really being able to communicate with those that service in Jefferson City on how those issues directly impact us. But taking that even a step further and focusing on innovation, and specifically how it relates to our strategic plan, so that work will continue as we prepare for the start of the January, start to the legislative season. The last thing that I wanted to provide information on is, as it relates to the board-appointed Vision 2020 structure and that planning meeting, we're planning on meeting Monday, December 8 at 10:30 a.m. and working to reconvene that group. And not only recapping where we've been and the work that's been done specifically as it relates to facilities, innovation within the district, our technology, our technology integration approach, enrolling out devices and one-to-one implementation, but certainly looking to what our future holds as a district and as a community. So we're looking forward to convening that group again Monday, December 8 at 10:30 here in the District Administration Center. That concludes the items I had for the Superintendent's Report.
Very good. Okay, that takes us to Section 11. Upcoming meetings? We're almost done, guys. You guys are stuck around. Upcoming meetings are listed before all of you. Just reiterate a couple of those. December 1 is the Board Candidate Workshop for anyone that is interested in running for school board, 5:00 p.m. here at the DAC. December 23, candidate filing opens, and January 20 is when candidate filing will close. Any other comments on the upcoming meetings that we have in front of us? If not, anything to report? Board committee reports? How did Finance, I know we met, got an update on that already?
Angie and I attended the MSBA regional meeting that was held at Ray Pack back on November 5.
Yep.
And there was a pretty informative presentation on setting your legislative agenda. Did it actually work?
It actually worked.
I thought you were laughing over there.
It was not a webinar. It wasn't a webinar.
No, it was a live presentation on setting legislative agenda and working with your local, state, federal legislators. Gave us some good ideas.
But you were timely.
Very good. Any other committee reports or board remarks in general? Going on? If not, we need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second? Sanders, please call roll.
Angie?
Yes.
Charlene?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
We are adjourned. Thank you all.